In partnership with parents and the community, Birmingham Public Schools will provide educational excellence that empowers students to cultivate their individual brilliance and positively impact their world.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, December 20th, and this is our regular board meeting for the month of December. I would like to say happy holidays to everybody who is currently celebrating, has already celebrated, or is about to celebrate a holiday. We are going to jump right in and get started. Joan, can we have roll call?
Sure, of course. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. President.
Present.
Ms. Joseph.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. Raff.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Present.
And Ms. Yeh.
Here.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, and with that, we're going to get started right away with our recognitions.
Good evening. I would like to call Principal Pesamaska up to the podium as well as West Maple Librarian Carrie Betts. We have a very important announcement. And I'll turn it over to Jason Pesamaska.
Hi, Board of Education. How are you all?
Hello. Good, hello. Welcome.
So it is my privilege to make this announcement for the wonderful Carrie Betts. Our librarian, West Maple Librarian Carrie Betts, has accepted the nomination to be the next president-elect for the Michigan Association for Media and Education. Ms. Betts currently works as an elementary library facilitator for Birmingham Public Schools and our school librarian at West Maple Elementary. Carrie will continue in these positions as she goes through the Michigan Association for Media and Educational Leadership Program, serving as the president-elect in 2023, president in 2024, and immediate past president in 2025. She recently represented the state at the American Library Association Conference in Washington DC, where she joined a team of Michigan librarians to present Michigan's model school library program. Congratulations to Carrie.
Good evening. So just for a little bit of clarification, I will start with the Michigan Association for Media and Education is now the Michigan Association of School Librarians because we didn't want to explain what our name was anymore. I want to start by saying good evening and thank you to the Birmingham School Board for recognizing me this evening. Beginning in January of 2023, I will enter a three-year leadership role with the Michigan Association of School Librarians, MASL. This organization serves school librarians and school library workers by organizing a professional learning community that provides a forum for sharing of library ideas, best practice, and curriculum. We host an annual conference, providing three days of professional learning, a spring workshop, and summer institute on library topics. We also curate the Myself and Books List, which is a list of diverse books by authors who have lived the experience that they write about. We encourage experts in our field to share education and leadership conferences in Michigan and nationally, to share the work that we do to ensure that our K-12 students are not only capable of searching for resources and reading those resources, but that they are able to be critical readers discerning truth in an age of misinformation and an age where there's a 24/7 feed. I began serving with MASL seven years ago because of my concern with the reduction of school libraries staffed with certified librarians across the state of Michigan. Currently, less than 50% of K-12 students across the state have access to a school library managed and curated by a certified librarian. I have served with MASL on the general board as parliamentarian, on the executive board as the vice president of continuing education, and as the chair of the summer institute. In my role as president-elect, I will chair the annual conference committee this year for 2023 and represent MASL at the American Library Association Conferences and the American Association of School Libraries Conference. In 2024, I will move to the position of president and lead the organization as we implement our new strategic plan and continue to represent MASL at the ALA and AASL events. Finally, in 2025, I will serve as past president by representing MASL at the International Society for Technology and Education Conference. To conclude, I just want to thank the BPS School Board, the BPS Central Leadership Team, and Jason Pesamaska, my principal, and the teachers that I work with for allowing and encouraging me to pursue this role in order to more broadly support the K-12 students in Michigan for access to information within their school environments how and when they need it most. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. And just as a reminder, West Maple also was a model school library last year for the state of Michigan, so doing excellent things over there. Our next recognition actually is not here tonight for the Seehome Covenant House Project. We will recognize Elizabeth Roth on January 17th at that board meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So our next recognition is actually also a resolution, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, President Hokumer.
Okay. But I can stay here, right?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So obviously, tonight, we are recognizing our two outgoing board trustees, and they have both served six years. And I have resolutions to honor both of them. So I am going to read the resolution and allow board members to comment as well. So they served six years, so we'll give them, you know, two minutes now. Okay, I am starting with Resolution 38, Resolution of Appreciation for Kim Whitman, Birmingham Board of Education, 2017 through 2022. Whereas Kim Whitman has demonstrated thoughtful, competent, and caring service to the community, students, parents, staff, and educators of Birmingham Public Schools from January 2017 until December 2022. And whereas Kim Whitman has honorably served as trustee, treasurer, secretary, vice president, and president while serving on the board. And whereas Kim Whitman has attended and led numerous regular board meetings, study sessions, special meetings, committee meetings, including the audit, finance, bond, and agenda planning committees, and served on many other special and ad hoc committees, and served as president three times during some of the most difficult years that school boards have experienced. Whereas Kim Whitman has played an integral role in the district as an active parent and volunteer, working with the Beverly PTA, Berkshire PTA, Beverly Principal Search, and PTA Council prior to her service on the board. And whereas Kim Whitman worked diligently as a member and liaison to the PTA Council, Birmingham Education Foundation Athletic Advisory Committee, and with her unique knowledge of human resources, has led two superintendent searches, including the most recent search for our sitting superintendent, Dr. Mbika Roberson. Whereas Kim Whitman is the proud parent of one Birmingham Public Schools graduate and one Groves Jr., and participated actively in her children's academic and athletic activities. And finally, therefore, be it resolved that the BPS Board of Education is sincerely grateful to Kim Whitman for the breadth of her contributions to the education of our students. Her unwavering focus on the needs of our BPS students, as reflected in our curriculum, budgets, data, and policies, has been invaluable. She and her contributions will be missed. So trustees, first, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 38?
I move that we approve Resolution 38 as submitted.
I second.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, I just read a very long resolution that highlights all of the many achievements that Kim gave us and really worked very hard to make sure that, and I truly mean this, during some extremely difficult times, this board functioned as it should. She kept us all on the straight and narrow, sometimes, I think, having far too many phone calls with either, you know, in my case, sometimes people crying. And she did it all with grace and dignity. I also would like to point out that having served as president three times, she has been a shining example to me as to how to be a good leader in terms of making sure that the president listens more, talks less. I know, it's hard for me sometimes. I'm still working on it. But votes last. And really, in addition to serving the public, serves the other trustees as well. And I commend her for being able to portray that, like I said, with the grace that she truly did. And I also consider her to be a very good friend, and I will miss her dearly.
Thank you.
So.
You're not getting rid of me, though.
I know. Okay. So anybody else?
I have something to say, but I'm going to address it to Kim and Adrian, so I'm skipping ahead a bit. But, and of course, they know me well enough to know that I had to write this all down, so I'm just going to read it, not look. "Kim and Adrian, I want to thank you for everything you have done for Birmingham Public Schools, our community, teachers, students, and families. You made a difference, and I'm confident in impact that will not be forgotten. Your selfless contributions have paved the way for our future, and for that, I'm grateful. Leadership matters, and for six years, you led Birmingham Public Schools with conviction, integrity, purpose, and respect. Your commitment of ensuring educational excellence and inspiring all learners to positively impact the world has not gone unnoticed. Thank you for contributing hundreds of hours each year, leading BPS, crafting policies, hiring top-notch administrators, listening to staff and student concerns, and then recognizing outstanding programs. You are now free of an endless string of meetings and school functions to attend, reams of reports, agendas, proposals, and other information to read and study, and a host of difficult decisions to make. Your efforts embody the spirit of what it truly means to really be the change you wish to see in the world. Thank you so much for your selfless and ongoing volunteer leadership. It has been my privilege to serve with you. Your service has set the bar for educational excellence and has left a lasting positive mark on our community. It is with your grace, courage, and heart that made our district a better place."
I'll go next. I'll save Adrian's for when it's her term. So, you know, I agree with everything that's already been said, but what I'll say as a newcomer to the board, when Kim was already here, I think maybe serving as president then, I always appreciated you taking my call, my questions. When I wanted to vent, you were always just so graceful and professional. And what I really appreciated most about you was you were always fair and objective. You can trust that whenever Kim made a decision, she tried to consider both sides.
Good point.
And you always made sure we always had a voice. So that's what I most appreciated about you, is if you saw that I was quiet, she'd say, "Okay, Nicole, what would you like to say? What are you thinking?" And so I appreciate being seen by you. And as everyone said, going through the pandemic was a tough time for all of us. And if I had to pick anybody else to do it again with, it would be Kim. So thank you.
You're sweet. Thank you.
I would like to go next. I am definitely the newest one here, so when I first came in, obviously, it was the pandemic. I met Kim by Zoom. Wasn't that fun?
Right.
But anyway, that was interesting times. And like trustee McKenney said, that I would, there was nobody else I can imagine leading us through the pandemic besides Kim. She was definitely a person who, even though it was virtually, I felt I was welcomed, and I was included. And then when we came back, it was very special as well, and to lead us through finding the new superintendent, that was a great process to lead us through. And I would use a word, especially, like I said, because I'm new, she was very patient, you know, making sure that I understand and how things are. And now that it's two years, and I definitely understand a lot more, and part of, big part of it is because of her. And thank you, Kim. God bless you.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait until you read Adrian's resolution because I have something included for both of them.
Okay.
Weaved together.
Okay. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, Kim. I think that the common thread through all the comments is that you are courageous. And that's something that, not only do I admire as a school board trustee, but I value as a resident of this district and as a mom who wants to model courage and strength for my kids. And so I can't thank you enough for channeling that courage in ways that are so productive and practical. As someone who is incredibly prone to talking all the time, your ability to listen actively and incorporate lessons learned immediately and be courageous while being evidence-driven is just unlike any leadership I've ever had the benefit of experiencing and learning this closely from. And so I'm going to take that with me as a parent, as a professional, and do my best to channel that in all aspects of life, I think, for the betterment of the people around me.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, then trustees.
We can move on.
Can we then, you don't want to say something about your...
But is there something about yourself?
No.
Okay. So, no, we need to approve Resolution 38. So trustees, all in favor of passing Resolution 38? Say aye. Thank you. All right. Joan, that passed 7-0.
Am I allowed to vote for myself, Joan?
Okay, so, sorry, Adrian. Now we have Resolution 39, Resolution of Appreciation for Adrian Young, Birmingham Board of Education, 2017 to 2022.
I move to consider Resolution 39 forward in favor of Adrian Young.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, I'll read it now. "Whereas Adrian Young has demonstrated thoughtful, competent, and caring service to the community, students, parents, and staff, and educators of Birmingham Public Schools from January 2017 until December 2022. And whereas Adrian Young has honorably served as trustee and secretary while serving on the board. And whereas Adrian Young has attended numerous regular board meetings, study sessions, special meetings, and committee meetings, including governance, policy, and senior services. And whereas Adrian Young has worked diligently as a member and liaison to the Friends Group, Birmingham Youth Assistance, and Scholar, and with her unique love of policy and governance, served as legislative representative and chair of the board's ad hoc policy committee. Her intense knowledge and ability to digest and retain difficult policy and legislative information has been outstanding and was an invaluable asset to this board during the last several years. And whereas Adrian Young has played an integral role in the district while serving as a board of education trustee prior to any of her children starting kindergarten, and more recently, as an active parent and volunteer at Greenfield Elementary, and will continue to do so as her younger children matriculate into the district. Whereas Adrian Young, in addition to her board service, was also recognized among Oakland County's latest class of 40 under 40, people making a difference in our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the BPS Board of Education is sincerely grateful to Adrian Young for the breadth of her contributions to the education of our students. Her unwavering focus on the needs of our BPS students, as reflected in our curriculum, budgets, data, and policy, has been invaluable. She and her contributions will be greatly missed." So, once again, that was the facts. Now I get to say something about Adrian as a person. And what I want to say mostly about Adrian is that I have admired Adrian's intellectual capabilities since before I came on the board. And I admired them even more as I sat on this board because even in times where Adrian and I did not agree on an outcome, I could never, ever fault her logic and the way that she honestly, very, very carefully considered every decision we made. She did it by looking at data, reminding all of us that we need to look at the data and really analyze it. And she, as I've also already said in the resolution, honestly has embraced governance and policy unlike any other board member. Thanks to Adrian, we have a new policy manual. We sat through three-hour meetings together, and that was just not one three-hour meeting.
All year long.
Yeah. And I think it was her favorite time on the board, pretty sure. Anyway, again, I would just like to say also that I have served on a lot of boards, and you don't always make friends when you serve on boards. And despite the fact that there's a small age difference between Adrian and me, very small, I am honored that she considers me a friend, and I will miss her dearly as well. So, thank you, Adrian.
Okay. I would like to take the opportunity to say a few words, and I'm really going to address not just my two colleagues and friends, but the community. Because I was elected, I had the honor and privilege of serving for six years with these two dynamic women. And it was, I thought, you know, coming, being a teacher and being a mom and doing all the things I did, that I knew things. And serving on the board showed me that I had a lot more to learn, and serving alongside these two dynamic ladies was a whole nother education. And so what I'd like to say is, I'd like to inform the community of BPS of the outstanding public service and dedication both trustees, Kim Whitman and Adrian Young, have demonstrated throughout these six years. Adrian, I'm going to start with you. You have elevated the standard of board intelligence. Your work ethic, integrity, and background have clearly been present every time you voted on a resolution or even heard a report or made a comment. You always dug deep into issues. You pushed back when you didn't agree, and you did so with proof in research and presenting data and facts. Along with those skills, you also demonstrated the most important one of all, and that is heart. Whenever there was an issue where we could have inserted heart into a decision or an opinion, you gave yours. In a time of turmoil, you carried the voice of students who were marginalized. You gave students the right to hold their heads high. You ensured equitable opportunities for all. You gave them, no matter what gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic background, or religious belief, you gave them the right to self-respect. This combination of unwavering integrity, your work ethic, and your heart is exactly what anyone would want in a public servant. Lastly, working as much and as closely as we have these past six years, we forged a friendship that goes far beyond being a colleague. I remember early on, as you brought your five-month-old son Jacob to an event or two, and how I quickly fell in love with him. And then you and Jeff didn't stop there. You did your part, and you gave the district two more future Birmingham students. You have made your children proud, Adrian. Indeed, you have served all of our children well and made us proud. I will miss you terribly. Thank you from my heart to you. Kim, I am at a loss for words to explain, to let everybody know what you did for this district. I have seen board presidents and board trustees come and go for 37 years. I have seen superintendents come and go for 37 years. And I'm telling you that working alongside you was a privilege. People will never know the depth of your sacrifices. You served as president on the board for three consecutive years. And let me remind the community, they were three of the hardest years with the most challenging conditions this district and this board has ever been through. In the history of our community and board, you courageously brought us out of the pandemonium of the pandemic. You endured hate mail, threats in your life, your well-being. You forged onward with the sole priority of doing what was best for children. Ladies and gentlemen of our community, I am a witness that Kim Whitman led with integrity, thoughtfulness, selflessness, and much more. In fact, I looked up the words, I looked up the meaning of a successful leader, and this is what I found: knowing oneself and knowing what you don't know. Communication. Leadership always starts with communication. Knowing your people. A good leader knows his or her community better than anyone else, their strengths, their weaknesses, what makes them tick, what motivates them. A good leader uses diplomacy and empowers others. A good leader seeks out feedback. A good leader is empathetic. A good leader is empathetic. A good leader stays authentic, presenting oneself as constant and consistent. A good leader is a role model, and one that is fully present. Without a doubt, Kim, you have exhibited these leadership qualities and more. I don't know if this community realizes how you successfully championed our district through one crisis after another, after another, putting in countless hours and days of demanding, relentless work, and you did so with grace, with dignity, integrity, and the true well-being for all. I was terribly worried, as her Vice President, to step into the role as President because I knew I couldn't fill her shoes, but the one thing that gave me calm was knowing that Kim would be by my side. These past years working and growing with Kim proved to be the best experience to develop a true and tried friendship and sisterhood. We worked through parenting our children together, sharing experiences, and providing each other with advice. Sophie and Jack, I want to thank you for lending us your mother. She is your role model and your champion. You two were the measure she used for making decisions in the best interest of all of our students. Kim, I respect you beyond the parameters of respect, and I love you to the moon and back. I will miss you on this Board more than you know, and I personally look forward to the next chapter of our sisterhood. Thank you. It was emotional after six years and what we've been through, so I apologize.
But I would like to talk about Adrian, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Sixteen, I was like, who is this Adrian Young? I don't like her. Like, she's got quite the political platform, and I'm like, I don't know who I'm running against. I'm like this parent from Beverly. But I have to say, the six years, so lucky or not, we won the six-year term, and I've got to say, as an accountant versus a lawyer, I've got to say Adrian has held me to her highest standard, and I am continually enthralled when you speak, where your perspective comes from, that she had three children during this whole six years. I got a new puppy dog, that's about all I can say. And I have to say that Adrian has continued to hold this Board to a higher level of acceptance, standards, and just questioning what if, and to that I will be eternally grateful to the woman that, when I looked at the ballot, I'm like, who is this person? And I love you to death. I do. I love when you speak.
Thank you. I'll go next. I agree with Kim. Everyone who's witnessed Adrian in action knows she is not afraid to speak her mind, but we are always on the, it's like a gift when she does.
I agree.
I have always appreciated your intellect and your wit. She's always quick on her feet, and behind the scenes, you know, we're sending text messages, and she'll send a text that'll just have us all dying laughing, so I've always appreciated that, Adrian. And you always speak so eloquently about tough conversations, and you always say something that I wish I said, but maybe was afraid to say, but you had the courage to do it, and then at the end, I'm like, yes, thank you for saying that. As mentioned, being the voice for some of the marginalized students and always making sure that we put them first. The other thing I would say is, I've admired your commitment at every committee that you've served on, you always did it with tenacity, and I want to say also, I'm always in awe that you did it with children and a demanding job, and this is not an easy role to take on, and you made it look so seamless. Your contributions are going to be missed because you always added great value to all of our discussions, so thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to just take a minute. Again, because of my being new and being started at the COVID, it was very difficult to know any trustee, let alone the two who are leaving. But Adrian, the time that I got to know you, it was a pleasure to serve with you and to listen to all the feedback you give us, and, you know, your legal hat was also always appreciative. You know, I hate to say this, it's almost like we had a free legal advice, so thank you. Please don't bill us. No, I'm just kidding. And so that was really, you know, a humongous asset that you brought, and then to be with young children and a mother, and still do all of this for the community shows great dedication, and you're a good example for somebody else who might be interested in running. I think that you have a lot to be proud of, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of younger girls who are growing up, and they would look at you as a good example.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes. This was your sunrise, not your sunset.
Right, thank you.
All right. Trustees, can I get a vote on Resolution 39, appreciation for Adrian Young? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, I know Dr. Roberson, sorry, you had to wait a really long time.
That's okay. I just, I want to thank Trustee Whitman and Trustee Young for serving our community. I had the pleasure of watching you both navigate one of the most challenging times in school history, and I had the honor and privilege to work closely with you for this last year and a half. Trustee Whitman, thank you. You were the President of the Board when I was chosen for this position, and I appreciate your assistance and support as I transferred into this new role. You have always been well-prepared and asked very thoughtful questions about the work of our district. In addition, your ability to provide an even-tempered, steady leadership throughout your time on the Board was truly outstanding. You shepherded our community for three years as Board President through difficult times with strength and grace. We will miss the stability, positive attitude, smile, and poise that you brought to the Board. Trustee Young, thank you. You are a fierce advocate for all children but have given a voice to those historically marginalized. You have always made sure to ask questions that probe, make us think, and ultimately help us to be better. Your ability to cross-examine our CLT team is unmatched, yet you've always pushed in a way that allowed us to do our best work for students, and we are grateful. Most importantly, you have always walked your own path, even if it differs from others. Your fortitude did not go unnoticed. Again, thank both of you for allowing me the opportunity to serve the Birmingham community, and I am proud to have worked with both of you, and I consider our community blessed by your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, no. Yeah, you have to go up to the podium.
Go up to the podium.
Come on. It's picture time.
It's for, like, famous people, not us. It's for you.
That's brilliant. Thank you, and now we are going to go ahead and move, I don't think we need a five-minute recess.
Meeting over?
Keep moving.
No. Trustees, are there any additions and?
Wait, oh, no, we're good. No.
And completion, or additions and deletions?
No.
No. Okay. Then we will go ahead and let Dr. Roberson do her superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, for our superintendent's report, I can just have this strategic plan, we're going to do a strategic plan update. If you recall, of course, you approved the strategic plan on September 20th, and what we promised is that we would continue to give quarterly updates to show our progress on the strategic plan, and also to hold us accountable to the work that the community has asked of us. I am going to go through the strategic plan, but the work of the strategic plan is really the work of our staff, and so at times, as I'm going through the strategic plan, I will turn it over to the respective CLT members, and surely everyone's here to answer any questions that you may have. So, again, quarterly updates every year, in September, December, March, and June, we will give these updates, and also, we wanted to share today, this is just a snapshot of the things that we have either implemented or are highly developed. We're in process and we're working through it, but this has not encompassed all of the work that we are doing, but wanted to give a snapshot of where we are. So, under student achievement, one of our aims is to strengthen core academic instruction and increase proficiency, and at this time, I'm going to ask April Imperial to just give an update on where we are in the math pilot process.
Yes, so as you know, we moved into our math pilot beginning the start of the school year. Our math pilot will officially run. Oh, thank you. Our math pilot will officially run through February 3rd, although our students will retain and be in the materials until the end of the school year. We have finalized our survey questions, which are going to be going out to our students, our teachers, our parents. We've also finalized our focus group dates and our focus group probes, which we will be engaging with the same constituents. We're planning for our Curriculum Review Committee to reconvene for three days to analyze the data, discuss the two pilot materials, and make a selection, beginning on March 6th, and we hope to bring the selection to the Board in April.
Thank you. As far as, in regards to our aim in reducing and eliminating disparities between students, one of the things that you are aware of is that we implemented a one-to-one technology program for middle school and high school, and that is just to make sure that all of our students have the access necessary to technology so they can participate fully. As well, I'm going to, again, April, if you would, talk about the MTSS framework and where we are in Phase One.
I got it. All right. So, we are very excited to be implementing an MTSS framework. So, previously, our district has operated MTSS framework, school by school. MTSS is a framework that looks at students across the continuum, so those students that are on grade levels, below grade level, and above grade level, and it looks at what are the unique needs of those students, and how do we serve those needs. So, our MTSS framework looks at both our most needy students who need support, as well as our students who might need enrichment and advanced coursework. And so, we're beginning with K5, and so we've had our, we have drafted our initial district-wide framework. We have looked at our beginning-of-the-year data, identified our students that were in need of support in grades K5. We have written the student support plans for those students, and they have been underway, so those students are getting various supports throughout our schools. Our schools are working on establishing teacher teams, which are really focused on core instruction, which we call Tier One, and then each school is establishing a school MTSS team, and that's Job's primary focus, is to look at our most needy students, those students that need the most support, or those students that might need the most advanced work, and to talk about those students and make decisions as to whether or not we're meeting their needs and update their plans appropriately. So, we'll be revisiting all the student support plans at mid-year after our assessment window closes on February 3rd, and then we have a phased approach to our MTSS plan. So, we're beginning with K5 literacy support. We'll be moving to advanced work, K5 literacy, and then we'll be bringing middle school on, and then math, until at the end of our five-year plan, we will have a K12 system that looks at literacy and math supports for all students.
And just for the viewership, MTSS stands for Multi-Tier Systems of Support.
I was just going to ask her to define that for the community. Yep. Thank you.
Additionally, we are part of student achievement is also increasing college and career readiness, and so we're giving, want to give an update about the CTE, which is Career Tech Education Course Review.
So, I have to give a lot of credit to Caitlin Billups, who's the curriculum coordinator on my team, and Amy Bowman, who is the department head for, District Department Head for CTE Career Readiness. They're doing a lot of work with the CTE teachers. They have begun an analysis of our CTE courses with a clear focus on modernizing those CTE courses, both in the instructional materials, as well as the resources that the students are engaging with, and in the internships or the career-focused work that they might be doing as a part of our CTE programming. So, that review has started. They have also updated all of their course descriptions to ensure that they accurately depict what's happening in the courses as a part of the course catalog. We convened our first Future Educator Advisory Committee, and that committee came together to discuss the possibility of adding a CTE program for future educators, and they voted unanimously to begin the work to add that program on the 23, for the 23-24 school year, starting at Groves, and the application to the state was submitted on November 22nd. So, our CTE teachers will continue that work throughout this school year and next school year to revamp, and look forward to seeing new instructional materials coming your way as a part of our curriculum process.
Also, part of college and career readiness, one of our goals was to make sure that our students at the Adult Transition Program are improving their work readiness skills. Laura Mahler is ill today, but what I can share about this is that we are piloting a community-based skills assessment that comes from Autism Speaks, and it is a research-based assessment, and we're piloting it because we want to make sure that it gives us the right information around work readiness skills for both our cognitively impaired and our students who have a diagnosis of, in the ASD program. And so, they are getting information there. Again, if this is the right assessment, they'll use it as a baseline so that they know what skills they need to work on with their students. In the area of culture, of unity, and well-being, we have a number of things. We wanted to create a district-wide system to encourage social and emotional wellness, and one of the things that we are working on is the Better Together Campaign.
So, Better Together encompasses a couple of different strategies. We actually have really focused on aligning our school improvement planning so that we are really setting our goals to meet the needs of all learners, and we are revisiting those school improvement plans and adjusting them along the way as we get new and updated data, which is key to helping all children feel prepared to learn, which is under this goal. We have aligned the work of our We have aligned the work of our character education, our diversity, equity, and inclusion, and our social-emotional learning into a Better Together Steering Committee. That committee also has subcommittees that are working on our student-led messaging campaigns. So right now, our student-led messaging campaign is focused on community. And community focuses on our Character Education Principle Number 9, which is students see themselves playing a role in the wider community. And it also focuses on our social-emotional learning standard of responsible decision-making, specifically reflecting, having our students reflect on one's role in promoting personal, family, and community well-being. And so our students are actively working within their buildings to learn about what these things mean and to grow their community and to get the message out to their community. An example was an excellent example from Lincoln Street. They came together to talk about what community means to them. They developed a bulletin board around how each student at Lincoln Street brings to their community. And then they had a gathering together with the students. So it was excellent. Also, a part of our Better Together Campaign is our Therapy Dog Program. So we have went from one to nine therapy dogs, partially through our Rotary Club friends and also through Oakland Schools' grant. So we now have all our, only one dog is in the building, but the other eight are puppies and they are in training. And then we also have started doing micro-professional development with our schools and our classrooms focused on social-emotional learning aligned with our community campaign.
And then we've also implemented the Easter Seals partnership for students who may have emotional distress and the need. Dr. Lendenberg?
Good evening. Yes, we're very proud of our partnership with Easter Seals. And we do have it face-to-face at both of our high schools right now, Groves High School and Seehom High School. And this is a therapeutic model for more intensive mental health interventions that we have not been able to supply in the past. In addition to that, all of our schools now have access to referrals to Easter Seals. And we have begun the process of hopefully implementing Easter Seals in more of our schools in the future. So we're excited about the days ahead with Easter Seals.
And as you know, to really cultivate a system for wellness, there is the emotional side, but there's also the physical safety. So.
Just really pleased with where we are with safety, although it never ends. As you're aware, back in September, we had facilitated our first town hall regarding safety, where we introduced our safety director, Erin Morandini, and really began to share out our plan for how we've addressed our safety audit from last spring. We continue to work through that. We have a safety director in place. And we will have our second town hall in January. And that will have a focus on Alice. And we will also implement our local law enforcement in that town hall, Seehom High School, in late January.
And because, this next one in terms of community wellness, because we service students from 0 to 26, if you recall, Laura Mahler has been up here. And she's talked about the early-on program with children who are pre-age, you know, before kindergarten. What, in working with her department, what they noticed is that there were parents who had trouble with breastfeeding with their child. And so we are working with resources in the community to help parents to be able to navigate the challenges of breastfeeding. And so we have that as part of our community wellness because in really to have a, to really support our students, we have to support them even before they enter our K-5.
Support the mothers.
Yes, support the mothers.
Great.
The next part of cultural unity and well-being is creating equitable access to extracurricular resources and opportunities. And this is also a collaboration with Laura Mahler and Dr. Lendenberg.
This is a work in progress, but we've worked diligently on this. As you're aware, 10% to 15% of our students in Birmingham public schools have special needs or on a five-over plan or have a student health plan. We also know that students who participate in extracurricular activities have a better chance to graduate, have a better chance of being well at school. So we strategically worked with our special education department to develop plans. We're not there yet. And our athletic directors to make sure that we have all the supports in place for our special-needs students to participate in extracurricular activities after school. As we have unified teams already, we've made it an emphasis, but we've had some gaps there that we're working through. And I look forward to sharing that more in the future. We have a draft plan that we reviewed at our athletic advisory meeting last, on December 8th. And we will continue to work through that until we get to a good resolution.
Thank you. And as well, one of the aims was increasing authentic engagement with students, staff, parents, families, community, and alumni. And one of the things under here is implementing the Coffee and Conversation that I've been doing each month, either morning or in the evening, in different places throughout the community. Our last one in December was at the Krieger House in Franklin. And so we will continue to do those throughout the year just to have an opportunity for anyone to have some engagement. In terms of world-class talent, attaining and attracting, retaining talented and diverse staff, we have finalized teacher negotiations or the wage re-opener for this year, which Mr. Nerforos will talk about later in the agenda as well. We want to provide high-quality professional learning. We've instilled a professional development survey. And also, there is a math podcast that is hosted by Sarah Seabor and Dr. Amber Davis, where they engage the different teachers throughout our BPS community and get them very excited about math. It's called "The Common Denominator", for the math people in the audience. And then we also have a Math Power Squad. I don't know if you want to talk about the Math Power Squad?
Sure. One of the ways that we believe in providing high-quality professional development is to empower our teacher leaders within the district to both develop and facilitate that, some of the professional learning. And so as a part of our focus on mathematics, gearing up for a potential new curriculum next year, we've had a focus on math professional learning for the entire district. And we have an 18-member PD Power Squad that on Friday, the 9th, facilitated professional learning across the district for grades K-8. Teachers got to choose three sessions from a menu of options to go to throughout the afternoon. And I will say, it was a big hit. We had over 92% of the educators that completed the survey say that the professional learning was relevant and that they were very or extremely likely to apply it to their practice. So we're very proud of those educators and all of the hard work they put in to both planning and facilitating. We can, we plan to continue expanding our teachers' role in our own professional learning.
And then the last area of our four areas is responsible stewardship. And one of our aims is to boldly market the district to increase student enrollment. And so one of the things that we have done this school year is increased our press releases and positive stories and storytelling. Also, increasing our footprint for social media. So we have reinvigorated our LinkedIn page on social media as well as really implementing intentional promotion for the strategic plan. The last time I was here, I shared some of the actual documents that we have for the strategic plan. And we've been sharing those with our, with community members as well. You also noticed that we've implemented a refresh to the e-news. So it has a different format, different font, rotating messages from central leadership team members as well. And we are in the process of redesigning our website. And so there's more to come on that. But one of the things that was really intentional, and I have to give kudos to Zach Riley Kelly and also our new communications manager, Cortez Strickland, who's in the audience, is that they identified a company to redo our website that primarily works with private schools. And really having conversation about how private schools market through their website and how we might utilize some of those strategies to help market our district, since that is our major competition. And then lastly, our aim was to increase financial accountability with a focus on the strategic plan. This year, we amended the budget early. Usually, the budget is amended mid-year and then at the end of the year, in June. But this time, we amended the budget after the count day. One of the things that that allows us to do is to keep a pulse on where enrollment is. As a reminder, our enrollment was, we did pretty well in terms of only losing 25 students, which is really grading, especially because we live in a state with declining enrollment. So that means we got a lot of students back in other grade levels. But this, having that early amended budget allows us to keep track of what we projected in June, if that held true or not. And in this case, it was a positive story for us. But we will continue to keep an eye on that in case things are different than our projections. And then lastly, we implemented processes over this past year, bringing Dr. Gistinger in, that helped us to receive the highest audit opinion, which is an unmodified audit. Also, generated diverse revenue streams. So one of the things we've done is advertise the junior kindergarten program. We are hoping that that allows us to, one, help with our student achievement because it allows us students to have access to early learning in the way that parents feel like they need for their child. But also, it allows us to increase revenue by having students not leave our district to go take, to go participate in a young fives program elsewhere. And we know that that has occurred even this year. So that's, in a nutshell, our update.
Are there any questions? Can I put a little plug in for junior kindergarten? If they're interested in learning more about junior kindergarten, attend your home schools kindergarten roundup, which are posted on our website. We'll be talking to everybody about junior kindergarten at that time.
And you know, I also want to say that through the years, we used to have a program called Developmental Kindergarten, which it's now kind of maybe smartly and progressively transitioned into this junior kindergarten. And there was such a need for it that that is why we're bringing it back. And there's also a lot of data and research that shows when kids begin in preschool and kindergarten, they are much more likely to continue in the public schools where they started.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Roberson.
And then I have one more thing for my superintendent's report. And that is Resolution 40. And we did discuss the International Academy's tentative agreement at our last study session. We are asking for approval from this body for the International Academy's tentative agreement.
Okay. So trustees, if you recall, there is a stipend that teachers at the International Academy receive every year. This lengthy letter of understanding that is in here, the only part that has really been amended is Appendix A. And so that is what we are voting on.
I move to consider Resolution 40.
Just so you know, there are some other minor tweaks, but they have more to do with, you know, actual curriculum. This is the, Appendix A is the compensation piece.
Yes, okay. Sorry. Okay. So trustees, can I get a motion?
I move to consider Resolution 40 to amend International Academy Letter of Understanding Forward.
Second.
Okay. Any further questions for Dr. Roberson regarding?
Well deserved.
No? Okay. Trustees, all in favor of approving Resolution 40? Raise your hand. Aye. Thank you. Okay. Motion passed.
Thank you. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, do we have any board comments and requests?
Yeah, can somebody turn the temperature up? It's freezing. Sorry.
I don't know how to do that, but.
It's regulated.
It's regulated. Okay. I don't have any other comments, except I want to wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you.
It's up to you.
Board comment?
Hi.
Oh, board comments. Yes, I'm sorry.
Wait. What?
We are just deciding who's going to go first. We both have.
We both have something to say. Okay.
Because you're much more eloquent.
So, Madam President, if I may. It has been my honor and privilege to serve our students and community for the last six years as a Birmingham School Board trustee. The environment has certainly changed from when I was sworn in in 2017. So much so, and I can't even believe I'm going to say this, but I am relieved that my son only has one more year in this district. As soon as politics infiltrated our local, non-partisan school board, it was no longer about our kids or having each student achieve their highest success. It's now about political puppets with their agenda from the parties that funded them. And it's also the question of which side of the aisle do you sit on? Or do you wear red or blue? And this divisive behavior is poison to this board, to the union, the community, and most importantly, to our kids. And so now, in a more higher note, as this chapter closes, I am in awe and beyond humbled as to the intellectual, creative, and hard-working individuals that I have worked side-by-side with as peers, colleagues, community members, and some that I will always call friends. And lastly, I look at our captain steering the ship. I am beyond confident that Dr. Roberson and her brilliant, driven team will continue to advocate for each and every one of our children and continue to move this district forward. And to me, Kim Whitman, this is what it's all about. Thank you and goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your honesty and for your important comments. I just wanted to share with the community a little bit about what brought me to the board and what I'm leaving with. In March of 2016, I was newly-ish married and hugely pregnant and working full-time and also recreationally attending school board meetings. I had lived in the district for just under two years and really wanted to give back to my new home. And honestly, I really missed schools and kids. Before law school, I earned my master's in special education and taught middle school. In law school, I worked with unaccompanied minors in the law school clinic. And I started serving this community as a volunteer with BYU, Birmingham Youth Assistance. It was with love, compassion, and admiration for kids and for teachers that led me to run and ultimately made my campaign successful. So to be clear, I never did this to be famous on YouTube. As everyone shared, while I've served this community, I've also built my own family. And that came with obstacles, because this, these meetings were my first experience of the district. And while I was raising my kids, I found myself at times very worried that the world my kids could experience and learn from in this district was shrinking. But I leave my term reassured that this is where Jacob, Thaddeus, and Ruthie, my beautiful children, belong. That assurance is due to my experience with the teachers, the staff, the courageous students, and above all, the leadership and vision of Dr. Roberson. I also leave this term with a stronger sense of self, the power of my words, and my privilege. And to that, I owe gratitude to my community and my fellow trustees, who challenged me publicly and privately and modeled leadership and listening. For all that I've gained during this term, I, like so many others, have experienced loss. In May, I lost my grandfather and constantly turned to this quote that brought me some peace, so I'll share it with the community today. "Your absence runs through me like thread through a needle. Everything I do is stitched with your color." Despite the absence of the title "School Board Trustee", everything I do will be shaped by what I learned, who I met, and who I've become as a school board trustee. I am bolder, I am braver, I'm a better advocate, and I'm a mother who will hopefully have a bit more gratitude in the chaos at home on Tuesday nights. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to serve you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Adrienne. We will miss you guys, sitting at this table. Okay, other trustees, anybody else's board comments? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and move to the public comment section of our meeting, and I will read our public comment policy. Because the Birmingham Board of Education values public meetings, not just meetings in public, we welcome public comment on school issues. Most comments can be concisely stated in three minutes, and the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not on specific personnel. We welcome your comments, but cannot discuss nor debate items not on the agenda. When asked to discuss non-agenda items, we share facts, but not, but we do not engage in discussion. We need to follow laws regarding public notice on issues and be aware that other community members may have interest in the topic, but without proper notice, may not be present to contribute. And with that being said, I will call the first person Haley Sherman.
Hello, my name is Haley Sherman, and I am a sophomore here at Groves High School. I will be sharing my viewpoint on The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian by Sherman Alexie. Now, let's start off weird. Raise your hand if you don't know what masturbation is. Notice how nobody is raising their hand. So why are we even considering banning a book about racism, poverty, and biased point of views just because it mentions masturbation, something we all know about, on less than a half of a page? The Diary of a Part-Time Indian follows a Native American boy named Junior as he struggles with poverty on his reservation. What have I learned from this? I learned about Native Americans and their history, why their reservations get bad reputations, and how hard it is to leave poverty once you're stuck in its cycle. I learned by reading through the mind of a person I can never be. I will never know what it's like to live on a reservation. I will never know what it's like to be bullied just because of where I come from. Living in Birmingham, I grew up comfortable. But because of this book, I've read about what poverty does to parents and to the community. Being thankful to get a damp, wrinkled $5 bill for Christmas, this is a point of view not many people here can experience. And I think it's silly to remove a book that covers all these important topics I just mentioned. If we ban this book because it makes a couple people uncomfortable, when would we stop? Thank you for listening to me speak.
Thank you. Next, I have Augustine Legru. Legru? Just correct me when I say it. Thank you.
My name is Augustine, and I am in 10th grade at Groves High School. As I realized that a group of parents want to ban this book, I would like to talk about the book The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian and why I believe it's important to continue it in the curriculum. This book follows the story of a teen living on an Indian reservation and the struggles that he faces in switching to a majorly white school. It teaches how he overcomes racism and portrays the importance of family and community in life. In class, me and many other students discussed how this book showed us the struggles that people still face in reservations and the importance of this inclusion in the curriculum. While reading this book, we get a new perspective into what some people's lives are like in real life. As students and as people, it's crucial to hear a diverse range of stories and to have empathy and relate to others. Having books like this is truly important in the school's curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Megan Legru.
Hi. My name is Megan Legru, and my husband and I have three students in the district, a 7th grader at Berkshire and 10th and 12th graders at Groves. I am also speaking in support of the book The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian and its place in our high school curriculum. Myself and my two high school students have read this book. The main character Junior, as others have said, is a smart, hilarious, and relatable storyteller. You laugh out loud with him and his self-depreciating and witty humor, and also deeply empathize with him as he struggles with severe poverty on an Indian reservation, alcohol addiction and its impact on his family, bullying, racist, and racism as he chooses to attend predominantly white high school, and the violent and senseless deaths of several loved ones. Unfortunately, these are big, life-impacting, and realistic adversities that high schoolers in our community and the world at large struggle with every day. Our specific children may not be lucky, may be lucky enough to never have had to find their own ride to school because their parent was too drunk or didn't have the gas money to take them. They may never have had to lose a loved one to gun violence, incarceration, or suicide, or face racial slurs and bullying as an only ethnic minority in their school. But other teens do. And it is through reading and discussing Junior's story that our kids can begin to empathize, understand, and respect others whose lives look very different from ours and who must overcome serious life challenges before they can even get to math class or basketball practice. Does this book contain some profanity, crude jokes, and very mild sexual content? Absolutely, because it is about high schoolers. These topics are realistic and appropriate for such readers. Our kids need to read books just like this, that are funny and engaging and that give them diverse experiences and perspectives. We need them to read books that have powerful messages about what unites us despite our differences and about the powerful bonds of family, friends, and community, and how to preserve through life's many struggles. This book does all those things. I'm very glad that it is included in the current 10th grade curriculum, because this is how we educate the children in our district, to be empathetic problem solvers in their local and global communities. As books from diverse voices are increasingly being silenced in schools, I ask you to please keep it included in ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Bob Saad.
BPS Board, thank you for your voluntary service to the BPS community. This is Bob Saad, and I have two topics for your consideration today. The first topic is Resolution Number 46, Let Michigan Kids Learn Initiative, that you're going to be reviewing here, in my opinion. At the hands of pressure from the Michigan Association of School Boards, that's the MASB, the BPS Board will be considering Resolution Number 46 this evening regarding the state-level Let Michigan Kids Learn Initiative, which garnered several hundred thousand votes statewide, as well as passed both the State House and State Senate. In short, and again, in my humble opinion, the Board should not touch this topic with a 10-foot pole. The resolution would never have been taken up by any local school board, including this one, if it were not pushed by the MASB and other political action committees in, in deference to what Kim Whitman was saying, which I agree with her. Moreover, this initiative has nothing to do with the success of the BPS district, and as such, every school board trustee should abstain from this and all other superfluous resolutions over which the Board has absolutely no authority to act. There are so many things in the district with which this Board should be occupying its time, things over which you have absolute authority and can make a difference. I encourage each of you to repel this politically motivated resolution and get back to working on district issues over which your vote actually matters. And then the last thing I have today is about trustees Whitman and Young. I'd like to take this opportunity formally to thank trustee Kim Whitman and trustee Adrian Young for their six years of voluntary service in the BPS Board of Education. Their job has required long hours, hard work, conflict, sacrifice, and difficult decisions. And these two neighbors, neighbors, have navigated all of that faithfully, while at the same time raising children in the district. I wish them the best of fortune in their next endeavors, and may God bless you and God bless your families.
Thank you. Next, I have Ava Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ava Brown, and I'm a sophomore at Groves High School. I am also here today to discuss the novel The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. I understand that there has been a growing controversy regarding the novel and whether or not it should be kept as a part of the curriculum. I'm here today to voice my opinion on why I believe it should remain in the curriculum. I recently finished reading the novel for my honors English class, and I've been opened up to a lot of new perspectives on, I've never been exposed to. For the first time in my time as a student here, I've dove deep into learning about the Native Americans who reside in America today. I have come to understand the many misconceptions people have towards Native Americans as a whole. I'm aware of the concern that some parents have regarding certain topics that are mentioned in the novel. In response, I would like to say that I believe the lessons the book teaches and the educational value it holds definitely outweigh the topic of concern as they are much more prevalent throughout the novel. Despite what many may think about the so-called controversial topic brought up in the novel, many students in my class have talked about how the main character's openness about different aspects of his life have made his story more relatable to teens our age. So thank you for your time and allowing me to share my perspective as a student on this topic.
Thank you. Next, I have Sophia Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sophia Wilson, and I'm a sophomore at Groves High School. I'm also here today to address the concern about us reading The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian and how banning, banning books can limit students' learning. There are many concerns coming from parents about students reading this novel. But banning it from our curriculum will only have a bad effect. I've learned a lot about how Native Americans live on the reservation and how in these areas, and how living in these areas affect their life so much. Alcoholism is a big thing on the reservation that everyone is exposed to and may not be as big, may not be as big of a thing here. Banning books can limit students' education in several ways. First, it prevents children from accessing certain ideas and information that may be contained in the book, in the banned book. This can partic, this can be particularly harmful if the banned book contains valuable information that, um... Sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
That is relevant to a children's education. Or if it prevents alternative new points that would broaden a student's understanding of the world. Second, banning books can also limit a student's ability to critically think on their own judgments about the world by denying students access to certain ideas. It may present, prevent them from developing skills and habits that are necessary for critical and independent thinking. Finally, banning books can also have a chilling effect on the intellectual freedom and exchanging of ideas. It can create a climate of censorship and fear in which children may be afraid to read or discuss cer, certain ideas or even express their own thoughts or opinion. This can have an effect on intellectual development and creativity. Overall, I think the good educational value of this novel is greater than the few bad or inappropriate points throughout the novel.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have three people's name on this card. Emily Rankin, Anaya Green, Isabel Morris.
Girls, I'm, I'm just going to ask you to make sure you speak in the microphone so that we can hear clearly. Thank you so much.
Well, can, can I just ask, are you guys all speaking as one? Or are you each speaking for three minutes?
Uh, we're just combining it, but it might go a little over.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Hi, our names are Emily Rankin.
Anaya Green.
And Isabel Morris.
We're sophomores here at Groves. Today, we're addressing the commentary on our concern from the public and parents of the school assigned reading The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. We would like to share the value of reading this book. Some parents or public commentary have expressed concern about one of the honors send English assigned reading books. In English, in English class, we read a book called The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. It has been brought to our attention that there is concern about this book being taught to some of the language being used in inappropriate stories. However, we know firsthand that there is so much more to this book than just that. By reading the book and it being taught in our curriculum, we believe it has a huge amount of educational value that bases on diversity and awareness of other cultures. We believe that it is important because Groves and the Birmingham District as a whole is based on focusing on diversity to make our district a better place, and this book teaches exactly that. This is why we want to enforce the idea that it is important to continue to be taught in the district.
I understand that there are some uncomfortable topics in the book, such as death, alcoholism, and racism. But these topics are important to acknowledge, especially from a point of view from a culture most students are not familiar with. In a YouTube video we watched in class called America is a Stolen Country, a Native American man and woman talked about how most Americans think negative stereotypes about their ethnicity. The man stated, "Everybody knows the phrase, 'The drunken Indian.'" And the woman stated, "I feel like most Americans view us as these historic people with woven cloth and headdresses." In some cases, these stereotypes are true, but it's not fair to generalize an entire ethnicity based on a couple of instances. I believe that seeing more than one story is crucial to understand a topic. This book shows another story. We learned about hopes, dreams, friendship, identity, and self-esteem. I think this is an amazing book that can show another side of Native American culture. I understand the concern about explicit language and imagery, but I believe the pros of reading this book far outweigh the cons.
When I started reading The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, it didn't prepare me for the harsh realities of the lives of Native Americans living on the Spokane Tribe Reservation. The only thing I really knew about Native Americans was from history class. I knew that they were treated horribly, the land that they lived on was colonized, and thousands died from diseases. I knew other things, but none of the things I knew were current-day facts. The only things I did know about the current-day Native Americans is that they lived on reservations. I never thought about their economic lives, social lives, or life on the reservation. Those are things I learned when I read the book. When I started the reading, I thought it was a bit weird. Sure, it has some mild and appropriate comments throughout the book, which is what I believe raised the concern of students reading it. But this book taught me so much about the current lives of Native Americans. I think that it is important to learn about different cultures in America, especially one that has so, so much historical importance and background in our country. Most sophomores are 15 and 16 years old. The text we are reading is not going to impact our behavior or personalities in any, in any way. At these ages, we are mature enough to handle explicit content and be trusted to do such. You may be thinking this explicit content is not needed in the classroom, but explicit content was not all this book was. I think that the explicit content was necessary in this book to help us understand the story more. It also provided entertainment that made the book more interesting to read. Not only that, but the book was inspiring. It was a coming-of-age tale that showed you that you should always... It was a coming-of-age tale that showed you that you should always follow your hopes and dreams. As a member of this country and world, we have to understand that people come from all types of backgrounds, so we don't become oblivious and unaware. It showed me the harsh but true realities of some people's lives. I believe that reading The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian was important and helped me learn so much about the lives of Native Americans. If I hadn't read this book, I don't think I would have ever known about the lives of Native Americans now. I think that everyone at Groves who was able to read this book learned something, and that is the most important thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, I have Amy Wagner.
Sitting in the cheap seats back there. My name is Amy Wagner, and I am the president of the Birmingham Education Association, representing the teachers of this district. On behalf of the five hundred and seventy-five educators in B P S, we sincerely want to thank trustee Young and trustee Whitman for their years of service. You have been supportive and strong through some of the most difficult times in education. As trustee Whitman indicated, it is unfortunate that politics infiltrated schools, starting with COVID. Despite this, we appreciate you and the work you have done for the students and staff of B P S. We sincerely thank you. To all the trustees, I also want to acknowledge the tentative economic agreement recently reached between the association and the board's team, which you will be asked to consider and vote on tonight. We know you have had to balance the scrutiny related to the budget along with your desire to honor the hard work of your staff in a time of extreme inflation. On behalf of my team, Scott Warrow, Ann Wind, Heidi Smith, Ed Cogle, Dan Draple, we want to thank you and your team for meeting us somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Alyssa Darnell and Sophia Soma. So, you'll have a total of six minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sophia Soma.
And I'm Alyssa Darnell. We're both sophomore students at Groves High School, and we're here addressing the school board because we want to come out on how it is important for the book The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian by Sherman Alexie to stay in the honors English X curriculum. We understand that parents have heard about inappropriate or sexual content in this book, but it really has so much more than that. This book addresses issues going on in Indian reservations such as alcohol pandemics, racism, suicides, bullying, and overall violence. As it may be concerning for some parents to expose their children to some of the subject matter in this book, technology and social media are just as harmful. When a child has full access to a computer or phone or any type of technology, which most kids these days do, they are just as vulnerable to see this inappropriate behavior. Though some parents may be concerned about this book, in ninth grade, the whole class was required to read Romeo and Juliet. If you are not familiar with this book, it revolves around two teenagers who are forbidden to be with each other. While the book is about love, it essentially revolves around sex. If newcomers high schoolers are allowed to read about metaphorical sex, why shouldn't sixteen-year-olds be able to read one small comment on masturbation despite the fact that it is a completely normal thing? So why are the adults in our community trying to tell us that it isn't okay? Even though we read about some explicit content, we did learn about something new in the book. Before reading this book, we were clueless about what was going on and unaware of the difficulties of living on a reservation. We are now informed about the truth of what's happening and have a new point of view. Not only was this book educational, but we enjoyed reading it too. And with the workload and topics that we learn about, it makes it much easier to learn when we are reading about something we are passionate about. Despite the fact that there is profanity, it is written from a teenage perspective and makes the reader feel more related to. And in school curriculums, most of the time, it is unlikely to have that. Although we may just be teenagers, we are also the future of the country, and some of us will be voting soon. It is understandable to shield some younger children from sensitive topics they may not be able to understand or comprehend yet, but we are young adults, and we should know the truth and have a choice in what we read and learn about. This book opens our eyes to the obstacles people face when living on Indian reservations. Ultimately, we think it's important for our education that we learn about real-life challenges and understand what's happening in the world around us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sebastian Forberg, and I am a sophomore at Groves High School. I stand before you today to speak out against the banning of books. Banning books has become more popular in our country over the past few years, and there has been talk of banning a book I read in my English class. Banning certain books is a violation to our freedom of expression, and it denies us the opportunity to expand our understanding of the world. My first argument against banning books is that it violates our freedom of expression. Censoring books is a clear violation of this right because it suppresses the ideas and opinions that books are showing. These ideas and opinions could be useful for people to trying to formulate decisions and beliefs. In addition to violating our freedom of expression, banning books also gets rid of a source that we can use to learn and grow. Books are a source of knowledge and provide us with new perspectives on the world. By censoring certain books, we are limiting our ability to fully understand the world around us. For example, books that talk about sexuality or racism can better educate people to understand what other people are going through and how they can change to help. The reason many books are being censored in schools is because parents think their child should not be exposed to things like sexuality and racism. I think these are controversial topics that should be taught in schools because they are becoming more and more prevalent in our society, and kids should be educated on what is happening. Overall, banning books is not a solution to any issue or problem. It is a violation of our fundamental right to freedom of expression and denies us the opportunity to learn and grow. We should resist the temptation to censor books and instead embrace the diversity and ideas that they bring. Thank you.
Next, I have, and I think I'm going to mispronounce this last name, Juno, is it Solsen?
It's Solsen.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Juno Solsen, a sophomore at Groves High School. I come here tonight to comment and discuss the suggested removal of The Absolutely True Diary of an American Indian from the English curriculum. As an English student currently going through the class, I can say with certainty that although it's not my favorite book, it's much easier and more enjoyable to read than some of the other classics required in English classes across the country. Sure, reading The Odyssey was a cool experience, but was anyone actually able to understand it? I had to use Spark Notes in order to catch a glimpse of what they were trying to say, even when it was unclear. And to be completely honest, the recent book bannings and challengeings across the country are reminiscent of an Orwellian nightmare. Does 1984 ring any bells? I'm not claiming that the members of the school board are attempting to censor our books or education by any means, but if you remove one book from the curriculum, where do you stop? What's the gauge of inappropriate material? Because, to be honest, Junior's story is not the most inappropriate thing in the Groves Library. My point in speaking here tonight is that I don't think challenging this book is a good idea. I'm not the biggest advocate for The Absolutely True Diary of an American Indian, but I'm grateful we get to read something like this, something that's easy, fun, and relatable. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I have Enzo Marucci.
Hello, my name is Enzo Marucci, and I'm a sophomore student here at Groves. It recently came to my attention that the book I was reading recently, The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, is under the threat of getting banned. I'm here to hopefully give a different view on the book, one from a student's perspective. This book about a teenager named Junior living on an Indian reservation has lessons to teach that are incredibly important. It taught me to appreciate what I have, how the little things that I take for granted are unavailable for so many people. This book can provide a perspective different from the one we have been given our entire lives. This is incredibly important because without different perspectives to expand our view of how the world is, we get stuck in a little bubble, unable to see the world from any angle other than our narrow perspective. Does this book have inappropriate parts? Of course it does. It's written as a diary from the view of a teenage boy. There are bound to be inappropriate sections in it. So what, we are high schoolers. I believe we are mature enough to be able to read those parts and not giggle at the explicit parts. The kinds of inappropriate things in that book, such as the part that talks about masturbation or part where Junior states some odd things, are nothing that us high schoolers don't hear in conversations all around us in our day-to-day. If people are concerned about high schoolers being exposed to inappropriate things, this book is not the main issue. And when it comes to a few instances of slurs, I was also appalled when I read them, but as long as the word isn't spoken out loud and it is acknowledged that those words should never be uttered out loud, which is what our class has done, the book is fine to read because there are important things to learn from the book, things that overshadow the faults. And that's what we're at school for, right? To expand our perspective of the world and to understand it better. Thank you for listening.
Okay, next, I have Carmen Abirucci.
Hi, I'm Carmen Abirucci. I'm currently a sophomore at Groves, and I'm going to address why Diary of a Part-Time, The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian should stay in the curriculum.
Carmen, I'm sorry, can you move the microphone closer or speak into it a little bit more just so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
This is good. I understand why some may have concerns, but I enjoy reading this book. It was relatable and also educational. This book was a good reading experience because it helps you step into the shoes of a teenager in an Indian reservation and shows you different perspectives. I was educated about what it's like to live on a reservation. It taught me about Native American culture and their struggles as well. These type of books are important to have available to students. They're important because these books engage us with relatable and interesting dialogue while educating us at the same time. Learning about different cultures and their struggles can help students form their own opinions on the topics and help them get a better understanding of what's going on in the real world. Learning about real-world experiences in school is really important, especially since we spend most of our day at school. Keeping your kids from not learning about real-world issues will help prepare them for the future.
Okay, next, I have Sanuthi. Okay, thank you for saving me.
Hello, my name is Sanuthi Wickremasinga, and I am a sophomore at Groves High School, and I would also like to address the board about the attempt to ban and remove The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian from the honors 10A curriculum due to it being considered controversial, inappropriate, or uncomfortable for parents and children. As a student who has read this book and has done multiple assignments on this, I believe that this book is a very essential part of our curriculum, and we need to ensure that this book is kept so our future students can remain educated about Native American history and all sorts of other things like that. This book is such an amazing resource that we have in our incredible district, and I was very lucky and privileged to be able to have access to this book. And I was able to learn important things I probably wouldn't have learned if I didn't read it. Reading this book in English has opened mine and other students' eyes and helped us rethink and find other perspectives on what reality is like for other Indigenous students in America, and keeping us sheltered by banning the book won't prevent us from finding out the actual truth. We did many assignments in class that gave us more history about the Indigenous and how they are such an important part to our society, and it helped us grow better as people by dissolving stereotypes about the Indigenous and realizing how harmful microaggressions and such are. It was also just such an amazing experience to be able to read a book from an Indigenous author, especially since we don't get many opportunities to do so. Banning the book doesn't give the Indigenous and students of color in our district the solidarity that we deserve, and keeping the book will prevent other books made by authors of color and other marginalized groups from potentially being banned because parents don't want their kids to be exposed to contents in the book. Banning books because parents don't agree with a certain viewpoint creates a more xenophobic environment and an ignorant society. Our district is known to be one of the most diverse districts in Michigan, and to ban a book specifically made by a person of color doesn't put a good mark in our district. And as a student of color, being in this district for over ten years, I wouldn't have even thought of Birmingham being able to considering doing something like this. Now, I understand that there may be profanity and explicit content and such in the book, which may be considered a concern, but it's supposed to be written in a way that helps make the book more approachable to teenagers and people our age. We are mature enough to be able to read this without acting like children. Books are stories that inspire us, make us cry, laugh, and feel emotion, which is a normal part of being a teenager. They help us, and most importantly, it educates us. A quote from the book says, "You have to read a book three times before you know it. The first time you read it is for the story, the plot. The movement from scene to scene gives the book its momentum, its rhythm. The second time you read a book, you read it for its history, its knowledge of history. You read a book for the story, for each of its words." And this is why we need this book. It's a story of love, hate, and change, which is normal and something our youth faces, and hiding it and restricting it doesn't stop it, it'll only just delay it. And also, how can you ban a book for a comment that takes up less than half a page but not do anything to address the drug problem going on throughout the Birmingham district? Anyhow, I hope the board will ensure that the book stays in our curriculum for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, next, I have Noemi Elaine. Noemi, thank you.
Hi, my name is Noemi Elaine, and I would be talking about why we shouldn't ban the book The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian is a book that I think should be kept in the curriculum. The author is indigenous, which is something we don't see a lot, especially when it is a book that we read in school. I think this book gave us an opportunity to, as students, to learn about the perspective of someone from a different culture. This book talks about the topics of racism and poverty, which gives us a chance for us to explore today's real problems, and I think that it makes this book a great experience to read. The main reason why the book wants to be banned is to not expose students to such uncomfortable and inappropriate topics, but I think that this book actually shows students the real world. This book shows students the life of someone that is different from us, especially with much more inappropriate things that aren't looked at such, such as drug use or social media. I think that this book is naturally just a resource. Even though the book uses some language, I feel like it is just to make the book more entertaining and approachable for readers that are students. I think that it is important for students and future students to learn about indigenous people's lives, especially in an easy manner like this book. We should be more aware and exposed to people that are different from us. I think that this is a problem in today's society, is that we don't open up to a lot of things that we aren't used to. The fact that this book stays in the curriculum means that more and more students will learn about what I learned reading this book. More and more students will be able to learn about new things that we're not used to hearing or learning about. Especially for teens their age, it is important to expand our knowledge. Adding on to reading this book, me and other students have learned a lot about indigenous people and reservations by doing assignments based on their lives. Doing these assignments taught me a lot of things, such as how people live on reservations and even what they think about it. These assignments have opened my eyes on poverty and what it's like. Learning about the lives of indigenous people has made me realize that there are people out there experiencing such horrible things. These assignments have even taught me the importance of stereotypes and how knowing about a single point of view is dangerous. This is one of the most interesting units I have ever learned about. If this book were to be banned from the curriculum, it would mean that future students will never get this experience and opportunity. It would mean that future students will never get to know about the problems of racism and poverty with indigenous people. This might also just create even more stereotypes over us not being informed about anything concerning indigenous people. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, I have Mario Campos Lovasco.
Hi, my name is Mario Campos Lovasco, and I'm a sophomore here at Groves. I'll be sharing my viewpoint on The True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. Banning the book would be a form of censorship that would deprive students of opportunity to read and learn from this important novel. It is important for students to have access to a diverse range of ideas and perspectives, and banning a book simply because it deals with controversial or challenging subjects would be a disservice to students and others in the community. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, I have Jack Brunt.
Uh, hi, my name is Jack Brunt. I'm a sophomore here at Groves. Uh, I'm here to share my views about Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. I'm gonna try and keep this short. It's honestly an interesting book. It's detailed throughout the whole thing, and it kept me engaged the whole time. Um, it, it may be inappropriate at times, um, but however, it does teach very important topics. Um, it shows how to go through hardships and that, you know, no matter how hard you try, you can, you might not even obtain them in the end. The book most importantly expresses, or, sorry. My opinions shouldn't matter in the fate for this book. This is in your hands. It is important to learn about the diverse opinions and instances in this book. The, if the only reason to remove this book from the curriculum is some inappropriate language and some suggestive topics that everyone in these classes knows about, you should go into a school building and actually see what people are talking about in the halls. Although it is not my decision, this choice is important, and the repercussions will affect the future of learning in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that does end the public comment section of our meeting.
Um, to the students who came out tonight, thank you for sitting through our board meeting to express your thoughts about your books. Um, and Sanuthi and Mario, it's so great to see you. I hope you learned something from this experience, all of you. Thank you.
And the future generation has spoken.
All right. Again, thank you. Um, okay, moving along. Um, trustees, we have our consent agenda, which includes a personnel report, the financial statements, four sets of minutes. So can I get a motion to consider Resolution 41 Consent Agenda?
I motion to consider Resolution 41 Consent Agenda.
Support.
Trustees, questions regarding anything on the consent agenda? No? Okay. Uh, all in favor of approving Resolution 41?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, next we have our deputy superintendent's report, Dr. Linnberg.
Members of the board, I'll be very brief. Uh, we've had a recent Athletic Council meeting on December the 8th, and we had five topics that we, that we discussed. One was review, we always review the purpose of the council. Then we had a fall sports, uh, summer. We had a great fall sports season for, for both Seehome and Groves and high participation. Uh, and not just winning and losing. We talked about the, the value of participation in sports. We also drafted guidelines of if, in the future, we want to add sports. We have draft guidelines. We'll bring that back up to the, to Athletic Council in our March meeting uh, to discuss where we, where we are with that. And we would bring that back to the board later on if we decide that those guidelines are feasible. Uh, we also mentioned earlier about the support for special needs students and participation in, in our athletic programs. Uh, and we just talked about that topic as well. And then we gave a brief bond update. So we meet again in March, and we have, we have parents on our, on our board, and we have our athletic directors, and we had high participation at our last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two human resource resolutions to consider. Dean?
Thank you very much. Um, the first resolution for your consideration is the one we covered recently in our study session. It's a resolution we brought forward because we have a concern that has been raised over the last six months. Uh, the Michigan Office of Retirement Services, which handles the state's public retirement system for schools and other public entities, recently had been changing its stance and challenging some of the compensation that's reportable as retirement earnings. And that specifically involves our board-paid tax sheltered annuities 403Bs that are part of the compensation package for our operational and administrative professionals, our building administrators, and other managers, directors, and central leadership team. Um, recently, some of our retirees have told us that portions of their earnings were challenged and actually removed for consideration as part of the retirement. And we have spent considerable time through our payroll department having to provide documents back to ORS to prove that this has always been intended by the board when this was first elected 10 or 15 years ago as part of the compensation. Um, there had been some mentions in the past of using the term fringe benefits and referred to the overall compensation package of both pay and benefits that these employees received. So the ORS is kind of, was focusing on that aspect and rather than the fact that it is compensation for services rendered. So we brought this resolution forward essentially to help confirm the board's stance that this is indeed considered remuneration for services rendered, which is considered reportable income for retirement purposes with the state. We've worked with our attorney, Mr. Schindler from Miller Johnson, who has been doing a lot of work on this statewide, and he recommended this resolution that will help us, help our retirees in case they are challenged on this. And as he described, it is helping build a case statewide that will probably raise itself up to the ORS board to have to address. And so we, we provide the, you know, the full retirement that people who have contributed a whole life of service to public schools, that at the end, part of their, their retirement earnings isn't challenged when it was intended as compensation. So we're just ask for your consideration on this resolution.
Okay, so, um, trustees, again, we did discuss this briefly, um, at the last study session?
Yeah.
And, um, does anybody have any further questions? I mean, essentially, we want to help our retirees to make sure that they are getting everything they are entitled to, so.
And future retirees.
That is the, yes, and future retirees. So that is the spirit of the resolution. Can I get a motion? Oh, we already have the motion. Sorry. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution 43, the BEA tentative agreement.
Is that gonna go ahead?
Okay.
Um, the, did you need to take a?
Well, I, I was hoping to get a motion.
I motion that we move the tentative agreement, Resolution Number 43, forward.
Second. Okay.
Thank you. Um, before you is a resolution to address, has already been brought up, the economic reopener. As you recall, when we negotiated a contract with the Birmingham Education Association in 2021, it was for a two-year agreement. The second year, this year, the 22, 23 school year, was a economic reopener. Um, we've had various discussions, being mindful along of the budget concerns that we have been dealing with as a district, but also looking at the, the challenge of retaining and attracting quality teachers, particularly with the continued labor shortages that we see and with the reality that all of our surrounding districts and our competitor districts do have compensation increases built into their collective bargaining agreements this year and going forward. Um, so through various discussions and guidance received by the board that we have come to a tentative agreement with the Birmingham Education Association to be able to provide steps, full steps for teachers who have still step movement, meaning they are below the top step. That represents about half the teachers in our district. Um, as you recall, you already had concurred with giving an off-schedule increase to teachers earlier this fall. So the step increase will be part of that step, so there'll be the remaining value of that step will be given going forward. And then top step teachers, who also did receive that off-schedule increase, will just receive an additional amount of $800. Uh, there will be an adjustment on the longevity pay. This is specific for teachers who are at 16 years or above of service because these teachers in situations like this have often reached top step a while ago and have no more consistent movement other than when steps are granted. So this just adjusts their longevity steps by $250 at each level. And lastly, there was just a, an adjustment made to some language in the contract that, of how we compensate teachers when they, secondary teachers when they are asked to pick up a class on their planning hour because, again, of having a difficulty sometimes finding qualified endorsed teachers for, particularly for our math and science areas. Uh, we often have to ask teachers to split a teacher's schedule if they're on leave. So a teacher who has a first hour planning will pick up that and second hour and so on. But this is, uh, changing the way teachers are compensated. Before, they only received a percentage of the first step of their pay scale in their pay lane. This is just changing it to the percentage of their actual pay step to acknowledge the many years of service and experience they have and are offering those students. So that is, you know, encompassing this tentative agreement that we reached with the BEA most recently and that they recently ratified.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Trustees, questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I just want to start by saying that as a board trustee, I realize the seriousness of my fiduciary responsibility, which at times becomes difficult to make decisions with competing priorities. I know that our teachers are a tremendous asset to our students and keeping our students in school. Um, I also realize that the cost of living has gone up. Healthcare costs have gone up. And although we are one of the wealthiest districts in our area, our teachers are not being paid comparable to some of the surrounding districts. Um, and for those reasons, tonight, I will be voting in favor of this resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay, um, if there are no further comments or questions, we will go ahead and vote. Um, we should do a roll call vote on this. So I will start with Vice President Ras.
Support.
Treasurer Joseph?
Support.
Secretary Whitman?
Um, I abstain my vote, thank you.
Um, technically, if you're here, you, you are supposed to vote.
Given my, this is my last position here.
Uh huh.
I have chose to abstain my vote. Thank you, President Holger.
Okay, um, I will go to Lori. Trustee Azlujin. Trustee McKinney.
Support.
And finally, trustee Young.
Support.
Oh, not finally, because there's me. Um, and I am support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will be bringing forward some other changes with some of the other remaining groups next month.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, now we are moving on. Once again, Scott, I apologize that you have waited so long, but we do have two resolutions related to bond projects.
We've already discussed these two resolutions at our previous study session.
And at bond meetings.
And at bond meetings, so twice with this. So I guess there, are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, trustees, if you don't have, if we have questions, we can go ahead and ask Scott and then give him an opportunity to review the dashboard. Anybody have questions regarding? Let's start with Resolution 44. Can I get a motion to consider the West Maple Elementary and Derby Middle School improvements?
I move to support West Maple Elementary and Derby Middle School improvements.
I second that.
Okay. Any questions specific to this resolution? I believe this is the outside area at Derby, correct, Scott?
Uh, it's a combination of renovations and outside things at Derby.
Okay. And then West Maple Interior Reserve, I can't even speak. Renovations.
Correct.
Nobody has questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor of resolution, approving Resolution 44? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that passes. The second resolution is Resolution 45. It is for the Seehome furniture in the auxiliary gym. And again, we did already discuss this. The bond committee reviewed it in committee and recommended that we approve it. No comments, no questions?
I move to support Resolution 45 Seehome Furniture for the auxiliary gym.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then Scott, I know you have the dashboard. You want to review that quickly?
Um, good evening.
I shouldn't say quickly. Take all the time.
No, no, I, I understand, it's after nine here. Um, is that available, Joan, on the computer? Is it helpful if I pull it up at all or have to slow anything down?
Yep. We're getting it up.
Wasn't sure what, um... Should be on the desktop here? Um, while we're pulling that up, I'll, I'll just, um, just begin. But I do want to say thanks to trustee Whitman and Young. Thank you for, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you these last few years. I think goes back really to the latter parts of 2019. So thank you for your guidance. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your inquiries and, uh, again, being supportive of what we put forth and helping turn the community's vote into, you know, something tangible here on the campuses throughout the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Um, so while we pull that up, uh, the last time we were up here doing the dashboard, it is something we do quarterly. We were up here in September. Um, I won't, uh, I won't speak too much, but really from a financial standpoint, um, we haven't added that much more to our commitments, but we've completed a lot of work over the course of the summer. So roughly about $16 million have been spent since we last reported in September. And those financials are through, um, really through the middle of December, reconciling with the district's records through October. Um, the big chunk of that is really in the construction standpoint, but we've also seen expenditures in furniture as well as technology. Um, our owner contingency, even with tonight's award, still remains around 2.7, 2.8 million dollars projected. Um, our upcoming work for next year, we've got our work coming up at Seehome High School with, with the respect to the athletic fields. Uh, we'll also have improvements at Derby Middle School and West Maple Elementary School that we just voted on this evening. Thank you. Uh, we'll be doing Phase Two of some playground equipment replacement over at Pembroke Elementary. And as far as design goes, we're starting discussions really on our last and final phases over at both the high schools, Groves and Seehome. Those will consist of parking improvements as well as interior renovations predominantly. And also over at Birmingham Covington School, BCS. Um, those work, those projects will be designed starting now through next year. We hope to be back in the fall with some recommendations for those projects, and those projects would likely begin sometime in 2024. Uh, we have quite a bit of ongoing work still here in the district while we're wrapping up a lot of projects from the summer. We do have ongoing work over at Groves with the athletic fields. Uh, we just recently started the auxiliary gym. The foundations are going in as we speak, and that'll start coming out of the ground starting next year. Um, Seehome, we continue to work on the auxiliary gym there and some of the supporting activities there. Uh, we're wrapping things up over at Berkshire. We're really winding down. And for those that have been over to Bingham Farms lately, that playground's getting close to, we hope to be pretty close to being done by the end of this year, but probably by about the middle part of January is about when we're planning to get that certified for the kids. Um, a lot of the equipment's finally going in right now. We have to get it certified by the inspectors and then kind of back our way out of the site, get the fenced, contemporary roads down, and get it kind of restored as best we can this time of the year. We'll be back in the spring to kind of green it up, if you will. Um, hard to talk through, but, um, this is on the board website, and I would recommend too, if we could get this transferred over to the bond page as well, uh, where we place the other dashboards. But we did post some pictures of some of the latest and greatest improvements. Uh, Bingham Farms, you'll see, you know, kind of some progress towards the playground. We posted a couple more shots from Berkshire, uh, some things we've completed since September. So the pool area is now open. It's really very shiny and new. Um, all the door replacements, if you'll recall, those were all red. Those now are a nice wood-looking door. It's made a huge difference to that. Um, some progress shots of the gym. Uh, we've got all of the stadium buildings opened up at Groves now with the teams building and concession buildings. So that's all up to speed. We do have to do the staining in the spring. When the weather turns, there'll be a big falcon in the pavement as you approach. That'll get done when the weather turns. And then our ball fields over at Groves are also wrapping up with baseball, softball. So those are pretty much ready to go. We're getting a lot of the final electricity. We're getting a lot of the final electricity hooked up. That'll be ongoing soon. And again, the auxiliary gym, again, we're getting the foundations wrapped up. And starting next year, you know, we'll start some of the masonry work, too. So that'll become more visible.
Okay.
Any comments, questions? But thank you again for all your support.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Scott. So sorry.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Real quick, a question about parking. You mentioned parking. So what is, remind me again what's going on with Groves and the parking? And when that auxiliary gym is done, is there going to be a drive-through where people can come through? Because the traffic gets so backed up on 13 Mile in the mornings.
Yeah, so as you're aware, that area is tied off with the construction. As part of the long-term improvements, when the project's done, there will be a road that continues back there. It will be a little bit different configuration as it'll kind of go around the new gym and tie back in. But, you know, that traffic path will be available. And then, you know, we are adding some additional parking in the northwest corner of that lot, too. And that'll be done sometime next year. We're, we're going to wait for the weather to turn next year. And we're also kind of using that area to kind of help stage for the new auxiliary gym. And it's just kind of in the way a little bit right now. So we want to get a little bit further along. But that, those pieces will start to come together next summer and into the fall.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Okay, lastly, last agenda item. We have Resolution 46. This is the Let Michigan Kids Learn Resolution. We have discussed this in the past. I know that people think it's political. However, I would simply state that we need to protect the funding that public schools are dependent on to continue to thrive. And by sitting on this board, we are, by extension, advocates for public education. So, sorry, that is not political. That is just my opinion.
It's what a board does. This is part of our responsibility, is to boost up our enrollment and to make sure that our kids get the quality education, that we retain high-quality teachers. This is what we do.
Right. So, that being said.
Well, and I will add, it's not even just about the money. I would venture to say that most people who purchase their homes to be in this community is for the public education that we provide.
That's right.
And so we don't need to divert those resources to private schools.
And one more thing, oh, I'm sorry, but one more thing. We can compete in every way with any parochial and private school. And so I am advocating that we keep the funds and our reputation for excellent education right here.
Has this been passed by the, or has this?
It was presented.
It was presented. That's what I thought, but it was never passed. So in my humble opinion.
We're voting on it tonight.
No, I mean, in the state of Michigan.
Yeah, it was not passed.
So what I was, what I propose is we table this resolution until it passes. Then we, then we can discuss it. Because to me, we can discuss any resolution about any issue. Can I speak, please? I mean, I don't like to be interrupted. Thank you. And we can speak about any issue, about anything that comes from, possibly comes from the state of Michigan or from Oakland County. For example, who knows if Oakland County would want to put masks on us? So let's propose a resolution for not, for going against Oakland County because that's for the health of our children. And we should say, we don't want to wear masks in case Oakland County passes a prom, a mask mandate again. So what's the difference? So my, I will abstain. And if I have to leave this table to us to do so, then I will do so. But I, but I'd rather stay.
Luke, are you, you can put a motion on the floor to table this. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, I would like to present a motion to table Resolution 46 until it officially passes the state of Michigan because I don't feel it's useful to discuss something that's not passed.
And I would say that I am not in favor of.
Okay, well, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A second for Luke's. Luke, you have no second.
Okay. I would like to abstain. So do, can I stay or should I leave? Because I don't want to vote on this.
I mean, I think for professionalism, you should probably at least stay until the end of the.
Kim abstained from a vote that has repercussions on the future board.
Right.
You're presently trying to abstain from a vote, a vote where you're present. You have all the information. You're the legislative representation. Just let her finish. And what's concerning to me is, is the misinformation that you've shared with the community today. You compared this to a hypothetical situation of passing a resolution against something that hasn't happened in Oakland County Health. When I presented on this, given the information from the Legislative Committee, which you are also a co-chair on, the information that I shared was that there are sufficient number of signatures to allow this to be a citizen's, a citizen's motion. So essentially, if it is passed by our legislature, it's non-vetoable. If it's not passed, it's possible to get it on the ballot, on a future ballot, if all the signatures are approved. So this is pertinent now. Whereas if we wait until after it passes, our resolution will have no effect because it will go to legislatures who have already voted on the matter. So, so I'm concerned about your stance, both as a matter of Robert's Rule of Order and as the co-chair of the Legislative Committee, with, with an understanding of where this is at and the importance of the timing of Resolution 46 and passing it now. So even though there was no second, I, I believe we should vote on this tonight. And I believe that everyone present should be prepared to vote on this matter.
I agree. And Luke, I mean, you have every right to state your case and vote no. That is the reason for individual vote.
The reason I abstain because you've mentioned the word "if" at least five times in your statement. I don't go by the word "if." And what about if the new legislator in Michigan doesn't take this up and go, and it doesn't?
Then it goes to a ballot initiative, and the citizens of Michigan vote on it.
Right.
And they will have a resolution that either passes or fails from the Birmingham Public Schools Board, supporting it or not supporting it. Same as our legislature will have a resolution that either we support this or don't support this to guide their vote should they consider this un-vetoable bill. That's why it's important to do it now. You have the information necessary to vote. So an abstention is inappropriate under the rules of order and just given your position as the co-chair of the Legislative Committee.
I'm sorry. I humbly disagree because even if it goes to the ballot, there is a chance, there is a huge chance it's going to be voted down.
Okay, but Luke, let's just talk about procedure here because there are reasons for abstaining from a vote. And I can see why you would vote no if you personally disagree with this. I think that is appropriate and fine. But abstaining from a vote because you don't think we should be voting on it at all and you disagree with the actual proposal is not appropriate. I believe there are actually very specific reasons within Robert's rules to abstain, as well as the Open Meetings Act provides specific reasons.
Now, let's take it to a vote.
Okay. Luke, do you want to say anything else before we vote on it?
No. But I do feel that my last statement is, I don't know why I always get signaled out, but that's fine. We'll go with the flow.
Okay, so we have Resolution 46 on the table. Do we have?
We had a motion.
Yes.
We had a motion.
We had a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of Resolution 46? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay? All nays?
Well, I guess I don't have a choice but to say no. But my original vote was to abstain. So I will go along with the rule to make sure that I follow the rules. And I'm voting no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Okay. On that note, we obviously are looking at the beginning of winter break here, starting tomorrow, I believe, as soon as school is over. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday, a great new year. And we will have another study session on January 6th, I believe. And we are adjourned.